Yeah.
You read my box?
No, 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 it wasn't. It was just that.
We want to welcome you to our city commission's special meeting and study session. We ask that you turn off for silence on cell phones. Uh, meetings are televised every day on channel two at seven P. M. and then at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. We will begin with the special meeting. The commission will take action on the agenda items that were scheduled for May twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting. That meeting was canceled due to severe weather in the area. After they consent agenda, we will close the special meeting and move into our study session. Uh, first item on the agenda, our entertaining motion to open the special meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carry four zero. Uh, item on the agenda, consideration of previous minutes, I entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from the May fourteen regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Bowyer.
Aye.
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 Motion carry four zero. Uh, next item on the agenda, new business, uh, this, I guess, no need for the public, okay? Bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider bids for two thousand and nineteen pavement management program.
Our Public Works Director Mike McDonald to handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, this is a bid we've received for the balance of the two thousand and nineteen pavement management program. Uh, Mike Cooper from our office is here as well as Phil McAnany with the, with the company that's a little bitter. Uh, this is, uh, to complete the asphalt work on Twentieth Street, take it out to Eisenhower as well as, uh, rejuvenate, renovate the parking lot immediately west of City Hall. And then there's some pavement, uh, striping on a variety of, uh, streets throughout the community. Uh, once again, this is fairly, uh, uh, the work that we do on Twentieth Street, there's only a limited number of contractors and it appears we had one of them, uh, bid the project but they are, uh, they told us are ready to go to work because this project is not backed up by rain because there's no, uh, real dirt work associated with it, so they're not waiting for somebody else to be done. So we, uh, we do recommend that the, uh, city commission approve the board, uh, the bid with McAnany Construction, uh, this, and if you have questions, uh, as I noted, uh, Mike Cooper and, uh, representatives from McAnany are here this evening.
Questions or comments?
Would they be beginning the work? What would start first? Would it be the, the completion of Twentieth Street or would it?
Uh, they're somewhat separate. I think they have thirty days for, uh, each one. They can do both at the same time or they can do them separately, but I believe in all cases they gotta be done, uh, before, uh, school starts, if I remember correctly. Yep.
For all three S, for all the three things?
The whole program, yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. McDonald, just, uh, for the public or maybe Mr. Kramer, whoever, uh, just for clarification and reiteration on Twentieth Street, uh, go through the five-year plan. This isn't something we're just doing Twentieth Street. I mean, there was a, a plan that was put in place over five years ago and this is the last phase of that plan.
Right. This is, uh, uh, we, we realize that there was substantial, uh, deterioration in the concrete pavement on Twentieth Street from Spruce Street south to Eisenhower. And, uh, that is a monumental investment, uh, by the taxpayers and we wanted to protect integrity of the pavement and we studied, uh, options, alternatives of what to do. Yeah, and ultimately what we ended up doing is essentially replacing all the curbing, which is different concrete than the, uh, the pavement. It's, uh, it suffered from, uh, similar problems. But the, uh, the concrete pavement itself, we were, uh, we found that it was effective, uh, to essentially mill off, uh, or repair the bad joints as best we could, mill off, uh, where it is severely deteriorated and repave it with this, uh, it kinda looks like asphalt for practical purposes. And it's, uh, fairly expensive and we've been trying to do that. I think this is the fifth year of that, of that plan. And, uh, there are, uh, you go back and look at the early parts, you can see a little bit of wear and tear on it, but it's held up.
We've already started doing the, the crack seal thing, right, on Twentieth Street?
Yes.
To maintain, to increase the longevity?
Yes, they try to come by starting after about the second year and every year of the year or so and do the concentrated crack seal effort. Keep the water out of the pavement is probably the single most important thing you can do.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there's any, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move that we afford the contract to McAnany Construction in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carry four zero.
Is McAnany here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Can we ask?
Yeah.
I'm just.
Have a seat.
I'm just curious when they'll start, when, yeah. I know you can't, no guarantees, but when will they start, when will they finish?
Oh, you know, uh, the majority of it is our work on Twentieth, it's all, all us. And so, uh, I would imagine within a month we'd start out there on Twentieth Street and our crews can knock it out. That work within a week, then we gotta get it striped, but, uh, there's a little bit of work that has to be done. I don't know if you've been on the wet, on the south end of Twentieth Street, but, uh, you can see the concrete is, uh, deteriorating pretty good. And so, had that not been addressed, I think it would have been in pretty, pretty bad shape. So, uh, uh, the work out here in the parking lot, uh, has a lot of pipe work in it, uh, detention basin work, which is not me, so I'm waiting on those people to get it done, but I appreciate them separating two projects that I can do Twentieth Street, knock it out and get it done and then, you know, focus on this as quickly as possible, so.
What type of traffic interruptions do you foresee?
On Twentieth Street, uh, I don't see any.
Just do like you done the other part?
Yeah, you flip it back, keep outside, outside, inside, inside, and it's pretty wide open there, not very, not a lot of residential, so, uh, we should be able to maintain that traffic real, really well, so.
And, uh, the parking lot over here, how long will it be?
Uh, that'll probably take about a month. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, parts to that. Uh, they got, uh, some, we gotta put electrical line in there for.
West are electric charging stations for vehicles. And there's, uh, some drainage where rebuilding some curbing so we don't get the giant pond out in the middle of the street anymore. And then to get it to all draining in the same direction, you've got to very carefully reconstruct the base so when they come in to pave it, water moves in the correct direction.
So it's a complete removal of the existing parking lot, then a lot of concrete work out front, a lot of pipe work and things like that, so.
Parking lot will be basically closed for a month. Okay. Well, that's, matter of fact, you're down here more than.
And I understand that completely. And I, we've worked my hardest to get that done as quickly as possible, so.
Does your company do the, the striping too or do you sub?
No, sir, I sub that out also, yeah, yeah. But we, the guy that we've used for the last five years, you know, they're, they're very good, very fast and, you know, I think a lot of good work, so.
Makes a difference.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, next item on the agenda, consider bid for water pollution control vehicle.
Mr. Staples, our wastewater superintendent?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, issue tonight is consideration purchase of a two thousand and nineteen Ram twenty-five-hundred trade in four-by-four crew cab for the wastewater treatment facility through National Auto Fleet Group. They're a member of the Source, Source Well formerly known as NJPA. Water pollution control is currently using a two thousand and three, three-quarter ton pickup truck with just over a hundred and three thousand miles on it. This truck used for everything from carrying equipment, materials responding to our calls, picking up parts, transportation to training. The new vehicle will replace the current truck in use. WPC, WPC staff has called Jesse Cooper, the account manager for National Auto Fleet Group, discuss equipment needed for this truck and what they offer. Source Well contracts are awarded at the manufactured level and sales are made through local dealerships by receiving national volume pricing. This truck will take twelve to fourteen weeks to, for delivery. This replacement vehicle is approved with two thousand and nineteen capital improvements vehicle replacement program, capital improvements estimate of fifty thousand dollars. Two thousand and three truck will be sold at auction. Uh, bids received was, um, for the two thousand and nineteen, uh, twenty-five-hundred Ram was forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. City Commission generally awards bidders a bidder that are properly submitted and within the engineer's estimates. Staff recommends the city commission approve the purchase of the two thousand and nineteen Ram twenty-five-hundred four-by-four at a cost of forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. Attachment to your package should be a vehicle quote from the National Auto Fleet Group.
Well, it's reasonable to me, the price. How much can you get for a two thousand and three truck at auction?
I, I have no idea.
A heavy duty truck.
So you sent us to the Purple Wave?
Uh, yeah. Probably.
You said, uh, Mr. Staples, did you say fourteen weeks for delivery?
Twelve to fourteen weeks, I guess.
Where's it, where will it come from?
Probably a local dealer in town.
But it has to be maybe somewhere else. Have you sitting on the floor room, uh, showroom floor anywhere?
No, I always don't.
Any comments? No, no, no. If not, at this time I entertain a motion. Oh, oh, go ahead.
I move that, uh, we approve the purchase of the twenty nineteen Ram twenty-five-hundred four-by-four truck at a cost not to exceed four hun, forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carry four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance to rescind special use permit.
Next two items will be Carla Williamson, our city clerk.
Uh, this first, the title is to respend, resend the special use permits. We do this once a year after the special use permit, uh, we know a process is done and if there's anybody who hasn't paid for their special use permit, um, or if there's anybody who informs us that they would not like to continue their special use permit, then this is the time to bring forward the commission to get those rescinded. This year we just have one to be rescinded and, um, it is, um, because, uh, the childcare center that the people had, they've closed that, so they asked for it to be rescinded. Um, so, um, this year, that's the only one. So this is, uh, first consideration ordinance, um, and then it will just come back for a second consideration, um, next week.
Any questions, comments?
Yep.
If not, we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, the general obligation series two zero one nine eight.
Uh, this one is the first consideration ordinance authorizing the issuance of one point four million dollars aggregate, aggregate principal amount for general obligation bond series twenty nineteen A. I've got twenty eighteen A in my policy report, I'm sorry, I had a typo there.
Right.
Um, these will be issued, um, uh, for, um, this year's bond. The bond sale will be, um, next Tuesday, June eleventh, um, in the morning and then the results of those will be presented to the commission, um, that evening, um, once we have the winning bidder on those.
Questions, comments? If not, we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Commissioner Bowyer, consent agenda?
After review of the claims for May, um, I move that the claims for May eleven, twenty nineteen through May twenty-four, twenty nineteen in the amount of one million, three hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. Net amount for payroll number eleven, effective May twenty-four, twenty nineteen, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Uh, includes fire and pension in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carry, do we have a motion to close our special meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Bowyer.
Aye.
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 Motion carry. Now we're into our study session. Uh, first item on the agenda with our study session is review stormwater issue, Second Street and Chestnut Drainage System.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm gonna turn this over in just a minute to our, uh, Public Works team to talk about this project. Um, I'd like to highlight that this is probably our, to date, the largest stormwater issue that we've brought to the city commission as far as scope, as far as expected impact, as, as far as expected cost. Um, it's been a known issue for many years with the city. We've, uh, patchworked some repairs, uh, over the last five or ten years, um, but we're bringing it forward tonight, um, as the first candidate, uh, potentially for a bonded stormwater project using our stormwater management fee. I think as you look through the pictures and hear the narrative, uh, from, uh, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Cooper, um, you'll understand the scope of this project with some of the system being a hundred-plus years old, creating large sinkholes in residential areas, uh, causing the failure of streets and manholes. And so, uh, as, as they speak tonight, they're gonna go through some of the pictures, what they're facing and, uh, our recommended action steps on this issue.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, this is a request, or actually, this is to review the issues surrounding the drainage system at, uh, Second Chestnut. Uh, there is, uh, a map, we see the pictures flipping up here, we do have a paper map for you. Uh, this is a system that has been on our radar screen, if you will, for quite some time. This, uh, where, uh, the little hand is, is essentially Second Chestnut and this is, what, uh, Sixth and Spruce or something on that order. Uh, this is a system that drains about a hundred and twenty-six acres of, uh, a hundred and twenty-six acres of an older, much older part of, uh, community, uh, basically, uh, right along Spruce Street, north and south of it, considerable distance. It, it is a, uh. Sorry, Mike. That's quite all right, uh, everyone's. So we've got the, uh, we've got, we got the map, uh, you have one that you can take a look at and we have the one on the screen. Uh, the red area is, uh, the hundred and twenty-six acre boundary, or all the water within that boundary flows in some manner, shape, or form into the blue lines, which represent the drainage system. Uh, this system, uh, is, we have, kind of flipping through on the, uh, uh, the slideshow, is, uh, can, you know, as near as we can tell was one of the, uh, constructed in the, probably the early nineteen hundreds, if not slightly before. And they would typically build, uh, some sort of a creek crossing at the lowest part of the natural stream and then over the years, uh, the property gets filled in, the pipes get filled over and the next thing you know, you've got some really ancient thing, uh, twenty to thirty feet deep. Uh, this one here, uh, this, I think it will pause here. There we go. Uh, this is a, an apartment complex, I think we re, referenced it briefly in the, uh, policy report. It is an area town where sometime in the seventies, uh, property owner or somebody, uh, connected two of these stone arches with a metal pipe and built an apartment complex, uh, actually partially over the pipe. It's hard to believe that, how that happened and now anybody thought that was a good idea, but it survived, uh, till this point. But now they have a giant hole in their yard, uh, with, with a metal pipe system that we have no records that it's a city system at all and no easements. Uh, there are, uh, other issues, there's the stone, uh, stone parts, there's the, there's some metal parts, if we look through the, through the slides. Uh, this right here is in that hole looking down to the top of the metal pipe. As you can see, there's not much there and, uh, it's been creating a problem for some time. This is kind of the, the typical generic view, looking in a stone tunnel that was been , uh, cop, uh, coated with gunite, a kind of a cement mixture. We think that happened in, what, the thirties or forties possibly? Uh, and that was a good idea at the time, but what it does is traps moisture behind the concrete and it absorbs into the limestone blocks, which then kind of flake and fall off. And we got some pictures of, of, uh, Staples, uh, in a similar structure, uh, the next changed area over. So this is, uh, kind of the stone part, there's some pictures of, uh, metal pipe. Uh, this is a little hard to get, get a grasp on, but the, the dark part is rusty pipe. This is water standing, it's backed up from debris. And there's a stone arch that someone's gone in and formed it up with, uh, plywood and repaired it with concrete. And, uh, you got like four different types of materials here that are not getting along well. And the, the metal is, I think, the worst of, is the newest material and it's the worst, which is an interesting concept. Did someone repair, uh, non-city people repair that? Some property owner just went down there and did that on their own? We don't know how it happened. But, but, uh, there was a, a large lot that had a creek in it and the creek got filled in with the metal pipe and they built a sixplex apartment on it. I suspect that was all related. Uh, did the city allow them to do that? Well, it certainly got constructed, but we have no records other than a permit for the apartment complex. And that sixplex, part of it is sitting on top of that hole? Yes, sir. Not, well, not, not over the hole, but it's over this, uh, this underground system. Yes, sir. I mean, yeah, so there's hollow parts underneath it? Most likely, yes. And it hasn't, and it hasn't, something, it hasn't cracked or, or? The stone part, we believe dates back to probably the ninth, early nineteen hundreds. Uh, the gunite, uh, probably, uh, thirties or forties possibly. This concrete strikes me as something that was done in the sixties and may have been when they tried to put this metal pipe in there, at the same time they patched up a, a, a poor, a poor roof, uh, or ceiling on the, on the, on the thing. This, this system runs essentially from Second Chestnut all the way upstream to essentially, what, Fifth or Sixth and Spruce. And then it runs north and south. Uh, here's kind of what happens, uh, this is a little different version of the same, uh, same general area showing the stone, uh, it's got some trash caught up in it and all the pipe systems come together. The next picture is kind of trash and debris associated with the sinkhole and you can see the, the rusty perforation metal, metal pipes. It was such a, such a shame that such a popular product has such a huge problem that other communities in this, this part of, of our state, uh, they have programs, they go, they go find these and replace them, they're, they have more robust funding than we do. Uh, we're trying to respond to ones that are, are large problems. Uh, bend in the pipe, this is pieces of the stone, uh, that is washed off the walls and is accumulated in the bottom of the pipe. And, uh, the next picture is a sinkhole, uh, in, this is Third and Olive. Uh, this is under the, um, or the, the drainage structure is underneath this and this has been getting gradually bigger for what, a couple of years now? Got really bad earlier this year and then it's been growing exponentially. And then the one in the apartment complex really appeared this year, I think. Uh, about the beginning of this year, it was the size of one of our tables and since then it's grown to what it is now. So that's indicative of what we have, uh, out there and, uh, we, uh, we kind of bundled some projects together to seek engineers to provide guidance to that. We did a RFQ, request for qualifications, uh, related to, uh, Stubby Park as well as Second Chestnut. It says two thousand and eighteen, it was actually two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Wilson and Company was selected as a firm, uh, that we interviewed as having the most, if you will, the most qualified background to address, uh, complicated situations both here in Stubby Park. Charles Lottman with their firm is here this evening. Uh, if you have questions of him, his firm, or this project. And we asked them, what, you know, what do you want to do with this? What can we do with this? And they put together, uh, kind of what is shown in the attachment is a scope of work, uh, how they would approach the project, uh, to, uh, do some studying, get the neighbor, uh, neighborhood and residents involved, there may be problems out there that we're not aware of, and to, uh, review, uh, what we can do that's cost-effective to repair this. It gets really, really expensive to take thirty-foot deep holes and put new pipe in them. You're gonna have to do that in some places, but they were, um, kind of, as they, as they thought their way through this, uh, you have some options that, uh, they may not display well, but, uh, uh, this is kind of the primary project area, although I think we did extend it. North is, is to the upper right, uh, of this, and that's Third Street. This is a large, uh, kind of existing open, uh, vacant lot and this is the Pizza Hut on the corner of Fourth and Spruce. That, uh, what we looked at with them was possibility of realigning this to get away from the apartment complex, which is right here, and you can possibly raise the whole thing up. As they was built back in day one, it's way deeper than it needs to be. The, the upside of that is, uh, we do not have, uh, to our knowledge, a history of people that during time it rains, they have water in their basement because the drainage is so far down. Uh, but we do have a history of problems, uh, two years, three years ago, uh, we had to rebuild this, uh, inlet, it totally collapsed here on Second Street across from the Justice Center. There's some pictures of it in there. So we want to study the most cost-effective way to address the problems. It may be, uh, repairing what we have where it is, it may be a realignment, it may be, uh, some new construction, uh, it may be, uh, trying to work with the vacant areas that we have to create possibly some detention that, uh, would could, uh, perhaps result in a smaller sized project. And that's included in what they've presented as what they call Exhibit A, which is their scope of work. As they would look at those things and we would identify perhaps a range of options that we would bring back to the commission for, uh, review and select something that we believe is appropriate, uh, within our funding and that sort of thing.
If you moved that, if you moved it around the apartment complex, it looks like it would be pretty expensive, but, but how would you stabilize the current one underneath the apartment complex?
Why you have engineers in it, you have to ask the question, is it even ours? I mean, that's, that's a question.
It doesn't matter, I mean, you know, it would have to, something would have to be there.
You can, uh, reasonably.
Part of it, part of it is ours, it's gotta be.
Well, the metal part may not be. I mean, it, it depends on how, it depends which way you want to go and what the options are, but you can, we have no records that that was built and yet it was built in the seventies, there's no city project number, there's no.
Whether it was built or not, it was already, I mean, the.
So you can fill it full of flowable fill, uh, you can, you can, you can dig it up and, and where the, the apartment's on top of, fill it full, what they call flowable fill, which is essentially kind of a thin concrete, it'll set up hard enough and it will keep the thing from settling and then you can either smash in what you have left or fill it full of dirt. You know, you could stabilize that. It may be, uh, a bit more expensive to do that than to buy sixplex apartments, I don't know. That's the kind of thing you get to look at on this.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was wondering, it'd be cheaper just to buy the apartments?
That's, uh, something that we have discussed on other projects as an option. Mr. McDonald, when do you, I know that they're working on the scope of work, but if they finish that, when would you see that this work would have to commence? Um, I don't know, Charles, come on, come on up here. What kind of timeframe do you, you see, uh, kind of do this, this study, present some alternatives?
Uh, the initial study would start as soon as we get the contract, um, going because we're just studying it. You guys have a very good GIS system and other information and we can get, uh, LiDAR and other information from local government agencies, so we could get started on the study and be done, um, probably sometime at the end of the summer or so, if not sooner with the study portion of it. It will require a video inspection of the current conditions of the system because we want to see if we can rehabilitate it in place. But that brings up other issues because there are no sinkholes all over the place in this area.
Question for you, Paul, how would this project be funded?
Um, the only funding stream that I would see thoughtful is a stormwater fee, uh, stormwater management fee, uh, that we put in place. Um, the study that, that you're referring to would, would come back and look like something like the Independence Court study that we just looked at where it had, you know, option one through five or whatever it is. We have not started that yet. The work they've done so far, um, hasn't got into anything dealing with options at this point.
If, if the commission is interested in moving forward, uh, we would ask, uh, Charles and Wilson and Company to, uh, uh, review, make sure we agree that the scope of work is appropriate based on any comments we have tonight and bring it back as a proposed contract at the next regular meeting.
We have like just an estimate of what we're talking about for the, the, you have funding for the study?
Fifty-four. This is fifty-four thousand, something dollars for the study.
That missed that?
Especially early teen numbers and more.
Yep, I got it.
So is this something, uh, I know your study, you have it in the summer, then study comes back and it's something we can take action on in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes. So you would, you would see the study and then you would pick the option?
Right.
And then they can use a lot of the information they collect in the study, but then they actually have to put together construction drawings?
No, I understand that.
So then it would have to go out the bid, so I, and, and with the funding, we have to figure that out based on the option that you selected and the cost of it. Um, I would, I would, wouldn't think work, serious work would commence till probably twenty nineteen.
It is twenty-one.
2020.
2020.
Yes, sir.
In the Independence Court, how much should we put out on that?
600,000.
600. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an estimator, but I bet that one's going to be about.
Might even be. Yeah, more than that, no bet. We're a million and a half.
Yeah, we're bringing in 2.2 million, I mean that's.
That's why you were mentioning my payment to be bonded, right?
Yeah, if you try to pay as you go on something like this, it would, and Independence Court at the same time, that would be your entire stormwater program for at least two years, if not longer. You'd have to stop everything else you're doing. No more orange fence projects, no more street crossings, all the other projects that are in different phases would have to stop. So we'll wait and see what the options come in at. There'll be some construction estimates with the options and evaluate which one you select and then the staff will bring some recommendations on how to best fund the repairs.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Cooper, I know we have an score project, you know, this is second one. You're kind of rank ordering these. Which are the most egregious and need to be taken care of?
In some type of rank order, or is that not necessarily so?
So, yeah, so, right. The accelerating factors are, the top two are always public safety and public infrastructure. And both of these have those. We have many others that we're evaluating right now that are simply backyards deteriorating or smaller areas that we're able to fence off. But these two both check the box of either immediate public safety hazard or public infrastructure that's at risk.
Thank you. Our orange fence project, we met with our contractor this morning and didn't catch when they were going to start, but they're, we've had a great construction meeting and they're ready to go to work.
On the 2019 orange fence? Have any of those? Have any do have?
There's one that's been bid, we're getting a second one together now.
And there's six.
Six locations.
Six locations.
All right, so do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda, discuss amending Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire.
So the next two items, Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire and Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation. As just a brief reminder, the city is undergoing our first recodification in 24 years. That's essentially updating our entire city code to reflect everything that's in place now. Carla, pretty much, I'd say Carla and her staff, or really just Carla has been going through chapter by chapter, working with the team at MUNICO doing this. One thing we're trying to do is as items come up like Chapter 122 and 74 that are changes, updates, but they aren't substantial and that we can get out of the way, we're going to try to do one or two so that when we do bring recodification to you for adoption, it's not a three-study session meeting. So there'll be a couple that come to you, a couple smaller ones that we can then take off the list when we do bring recodification to you. So with that primer, I'll turn it over to Carla.
Okay, yeah, as Paul said, so for any of the commissioners that haven't looked at our, I know you've probably seen it online, but this is what it looks at like printed out, so to go through.
That's just a lot of reading.
To go through has been quite a process. So anyway, so the first one we're going to look at is Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire. And in reviewing this chapter, this was one of them that was small enough, but needed kind of just a real update to it. So I called the owners of the cab companies and talked with them and talked to them about a couple of things in there that were kind of quirky, kind of maybe out of date, just to see if they were okay with the changes. Maybe there was some reason, you know, that they liked some of those things in there. And they were all in favor for everything that I was going to, that I'm going to present to you guys. So the first thing is just in the definition section, the code was, this section of the code was last updated about 21 years ago. So it was the last time there was any kind of major change to it. So it doesn't address transportation networks, which are the Uber type services. Those are regulated by the state, not local governments. So I think it's just important to kind of put that in there when we're talking about vehicles for hire, that those are excluded from it. So we'll put that in there with the definition of what we are going to regulate, so it doesn't include those. And then, like I say, just, I'm just going to add some additional definitions to it, which is kind of lacking in parts of our code. The next section is the vehicle for hire light. As we read through that, right now, all cabs are supposed to have that light on it. As I started reading, as I was reading through this and then I was driving around, I'm like, they have them, but they're usually not lit. So when I talked to the owners of the cab companies, they're like, yeah, we buy the vehicles and then those lights that sit on top of us, kind of a thing that they can just buy somewhere. They're difficult to maintain, you really can't see the light anyway. So they really aren't serving much of a purpose on there. The code says that while it's out of service, they're supposed to put a vehicle not for hire sign in their front windshield. I don't know that any of them do that. Maybe they do, maybe you just can't see it. But cabs in town are, they can't cruise for fare, they can't sit and try to solicit a fare, so there's really no reason for an in-service, out-of-service light, so.
Why can't that? I'm sure there's a reason for it, but you'd think maybe sitting in Walmart or the grocery stores, somebody come out and say, you know.
Well, that's just the way the code is written now. If you guys would like to change that, this is the opportunity to let me know that you want to do that.
But the question should be asked, and maybe it's something we consider. I wouldn't say change it now, I'm sure there's a lot more to the story and it might be something that we don't want.
I wasn't going to try to make any real, other than the changes that I've noted on here, otherwise it's just kind of reorganizing it.
But right now, the only way you can get a cab in love with it is to call 682,000 or 682,000, whatever the numbers are for veterans' cabs or something like that.
Yeah, but again, if the commission would like to change that, let me know and we can, I can change that in the proposed new ordinance. So anyway, I would just recommend that we remove that requirement for that light on there. Rates and fares, the current code, we set minimum rates charged that the companies can charge. I couldn't find any other cities in Kansas that set rates. Actually, there's not very many that even regulate taxi cabs. But I just thought this was a little bit odd that we would set a minimum rate in talking with the cab owners. You know, it's one of those things where the consumer will go where the price is best, you know, so I don't really see a reason why the city would get into the, would want to continue to be in the business of setting rates for them.
So that would be taken out.
So that would be taken out.
How many cabs, how many do we have?
Three.
Why do we think the minimum rates were in there to begin with, just so?
No, no idea.
Just to make sure maybe that you didn't have your fly-by-night?
Yeah, maybe at one time there was a need for that. I don't know.
There was some discussion when we looked at this many years ago, that was originally, I was concerned that somebody could come in and undercut prices for out of town, someone trying to basically ruin the taxi business. And that was the reason for the minimum rates.
But you talked to the taxi cab?
I've talked to the three owners and they're fine with that and setting their own rates. And then in the limo section of it, it's just got kind of some odd where it was set for a single-passenger, a husband and wife, not just two people. I don't know who checks that. And then a family and not just four people maybe, but so I think that probably takes those out. And then we have in the code, there's a distinction between taxi cabs and limos. And what we permit as limos are really like a shuttle service. So I wanted to just kind of take and condense it all into a vehicle for hire, not taxis and limos, they're all kind of the same requirements. So we'd recommend that. Insurance requirements, just update those. Right now, there's a different requirement for taxi cabs and there are for limos, no real difference for that. I've talked to our insurance agent and she's given me some guidelines of what we probably need to be on those, in addition to look into at the couple of other cities that do. So we'll just update those requirements, not by a lot, but just update a little bit. And then suspension or revoking a permit and the appeal process. Right now, it says the police chief would give a recommendation to this governing body and the governing body would make a decision whether to suspend or revoke a license. You know, if it's something where somebody's driver's license was suspended, I think the police chief should be maybe be able to have the, have the ability to do that immediately. And then the appeal process could be through the city manager, governing body. There's actually a KSA for limo drivers of how that appeal process works, so we'll incorporate that in there as well. And then, like I said, just do kind of a general update of the language and rearrange it so it flows better. So if the commission's in agreement with that, or if you have any other suggestions of anything else that we would like to see changed, I'll just bring that back for a regular meeting for first consideration.
One more quick question. The limousines, for example, the Marietta, or has, you know, it looks like one of those run far ends and I think they take people down or will drop them someplace in town. Is that qualified as limo under?
It does, we, well, it does, it's really not very well defined in our code right now. We have not registered those. And so in the definitions, and I've seen it in, I think, O'Callaghan Park or Lex and whatever, and they exclude those types of services offered by hotels and things like that. And I think that probably should be.
Simplify as much as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, discuss amending Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation.
Okay, so this is Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation. The current code is about, I don't know, maybe 10 little sections. It just says what the Parks Department is, talks about the employees of the Parks Department, it talks about the use of public grounds, the closing hours, you can't destroy flowers and parking motor vehicles and you can't, and when you can have fire. And that's pretty much all it says about park and recreation, which is a pretty big department to have just a couple of little things. So in updating that, I've got in there the proposed amendments. It just goes through and it puts in the code what we're doing already and just putting it so that if there's a question, the Parks Department can, you know, point to something and say, we're doing this because it's in our code. And it does give a little bit of leeway to the Parks Department as a Parks Director to kind of set some guidelines and stuff that are outside the code as well, so.
Any other comments?
We get a lot of input on this from Mr. Grant.
Yeah, I went through and I looked at a couple of other cities, kind of pulled together and then looked at what we were doing. Steve and I had talked about it and incorporated it and we both, you know, approved it a few more times and, yeah.
Yeah, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes our agenda. I just want to first start off thanking everyone who volunteered, supported and prayed for the city of Lynnwood, who were affected by the tornado last week. It's always great to see our community come together and help support those that are in need. And at this time, if there's any other comments from our commissioners?
No, I don't, I've been busy, I've been working with United Way, so we've been 2-1-1 program and all that with the county, so they've been pretty busy. It was a horrible thing, we were very fortunate here, but prayers for the people in the base of Lynnwood area.
And reiterate, which is said, a special thanks to, you know, Public Works and I think to Parks and Rec, also with Allen to Lynnwood to help.
These parks and our team and fire staff, we're at the emergency operations center, so.
And did some members of Public Works, yeah, yeah. And as, you know, cities have to work together in time to crisis and obviously we did do that. And I think this Saturday, is it this Saturday, the concert down Haymarket Square, Second Saturday, is it?
Yes, it is, Saturday.
And I hope that it's, weekend's supposed to be a washout, but I hope not.
Yeah, those are always fun, the concerts.
Yeah, thank you.
And Haymarket are always nice.
And time to start?
Usually seven o'clock. Usually go seven to 10.
Yeah, I'd just like to take a minute to, Thursday is the 6th of June. More importantly, it is the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion of Nazi occupied France by the US and its allies. At great sacrifice of blood and treasure, Operation Overlord was the beginning of the end of World War II in Europe. I'm not sure whether any young men from Leavenworth participated in D-Day, but I think the odds are at least some did. So let's pause for a moment on Thursday to remember them and their cause and the scores of other service members from Leavenworth, both the city and the county, who fought for our freedom in World War II, both in Europe and in the Pacific. So I just wanted to recognize the big anniversary coming up. So I just thought about our city, which has such a great history of service to the nation and our relationship with Fort Leavenworth, which has been here since 1827, so.
Good, thank you. One item I'd like to bring up, it's, oh, it's been a decade or more since we've done a serious change to trash pickup days. And I know that's a very touchy issue, but as development happens, as population patterns change, you start having really long days, Thursdays are really long days, some short days, and so every once in a while you need to realign a little bit. So we are changing 2,300 addresses, they're trash days, to better align and get our days back in order, back in balance. So what we're doing is every single person affected will receive a letter that will go out tomorrow morning, then they will see, receive a follow-up postcard, then they will, then we will hand deliver a door hanger to every address that changes. We'll also, for the first couple of weeks, be very flexible with how that works. Mike's been pushing me on this for a little bit and it had to be done to realign and get us back in balance, but I know trash service is a very personal thing and people have their trash day and they've had it a long time. Carla told me I better not change hers.
Thursday, right?
Thursday, 30 years.
But some of our crews are working till after 7:00 PM on certain nights and so you need to readjust. So we have a three, we're going to make contact three specific times with a letter, a postcard and a door hanger. And then we will be flexible, so that'll go out starting tomorrow morning and we'll notify them and it'll take place starting in two weeks.
It'll be the week of?
The 17th. So we'll get the letter out tomorrow, postcard out probably Friday, and then we'll do the door hangers in the middle of next week.
Will you do anything on the channel?
We'll put it everywhere. It's really a personal thing, so you can, so you can see, we'll put the map up. Melissa will put the math on Facebook and on the website, so you'll be able to see, you'll be able to call the service center. So we'll hope it is less of a disruption as possible.
We'll see what there will be.
It'll be, we're sure going to try. And that's something that need to be done for a while, so that's all I.
Steve King, our refuse forum chair this evening, and he and his staff put a lot of energy into this. They think it will help solve a lot of problems. It might be a rough spot getting there and then there'd be recommended for past roommate for some time to get this in place and.
We're just happy we have such good trash pickup here because a lot of places don't.
Yeah. So the secret will be exposed tomorrow morning.
We'll be in the mail.
Send the letters out.
Yeah. I think we may have had a few letters escape before tomorrow, but.
Where does it go on the website or social media?
Oh, yeah. Well, that's good. Well, if there's nothing else, meetings adjourned.
Thank you.